of allegiance since we're not all in the same room. And we'll wait till we get our audio adjusted in the room. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Pacheco.
Here. Announcements, do any counselors have announcements at this time?
Not for me.
Not from Mr. Geisler? Gloria?
Not for me.
Natalie?
Uh, no, well, actually, just a thank you to our staff for, um, the extra busy work that's happened during our campaign with all the early voting and absentee voting. Our staff has done incredible job. Huge thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. We have no public hearing. We'll move on to communications. Mr. Mulder?
So we just have.
Perfect, we muted.
I am no. So we just have two items of communication for your information. The first one is from the Minnesota Employment Economic Development Department regarding essential wellness center grant. That grant has been paid in full to us. They will do some additional checking next summer, and I imagine that we'll have some additional paperwork that we'll need to fill out and to document expenses and things like that, but that's for your information. The second one is from Director of Finance Administration, Ken Arm. This is just an update on our CARES report and the items that we have submitted to the state. We have until November 15th to spend the money for on CARES money, and the rest of that will go back to the county. That's it.
Thank you. We're going to move to public discussion. There's no presentations at this portion of the meeting. I want to point out something before public discussion starts. There are two periods tonight of public discussion. The first one will be item eight. That's general public discussion about any item not on the agenda. And then we will have a public discussion period under each individual item on the agenda before it is voted on. I want to remind anyone who wishes to participate in public discussion that for each item, there will be a three-minute limit on public discussion, and there will be one opportunity to speak. Any other comments can be made to the city clerk in writing. We will move to the, uh, the general public discussion. Is there anyone present in council chambers that wishes to discuss anything not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone present at the online meeting who wishes to discuss anything not on the agenda? With no general public discussion, we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Peterson?
Second. Nelson?
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye. We have no motions on tonight's agenda. Ordinances, uh, ordinance 2020 dash zero seven. An ordinance amending Hermantown Code of Ordinance, Section 270 fee schedule. This is the first reading. The final reading and vote will take place in two weeks. Under resolutions, resolution 2020 dash one forty-three, resolution adopting assessment role for 2020 Road Improvement District number five thirty-one and number five thirty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the final.
Sorry?
That's right. This is the. You're muted?
I'm muted and down.
Okay, so this is the, uh, resolution that adopts the assessment role for, um, the Portland Alexandra Carlson Johnson and a portion of the Hermantown Road improvements. Um, this includes all of the, um, assessed parcels, um, including these deferrals which will then they'll only have the deferral payment that they'll make if they are approved. And then finally, there are two parties that objected. Um, they will have their objection hearing next week on November ninth. Um, and then we will take action on those two items on the sixteenth. So this is, um, kind of the final action that the council needs to take on, um, this road improvement assessment process.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from counselors on this matter? Hearing none, is there any public input on this assessment? With no public input, I would ask for a roll call. Counselor Nelson, uh, she's trying to call you for roll call.
Aye, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear her.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye, thank you all. Resolution 2020 dash one forty-four, resolution approving application of assessment role number five thirty-one A dash six eight for deferral of assessment against the property for the construction of 2020 Road Improvement District number five thirty-one and five thirty-two. This is a hardship deferral. Do we need any explanation, Mr. Mulder?
Aye. Whether you need it or not, you're gonna get it. This is, um, the next four resolutions, one forty-four, one forty-five, one forty-six, and one forty-seven are all individual applications for deferrals, um, on this project. There is a process that we follow, um, where they need to apply, um, and provide certain data in to, to us. We review that, and in each case, these four applicants, uh, met the criteria under our policy. So they will, um, be a set, if approved, they will have to pay the average interest, um, until such time that, they do not meet those criteria, and then the, um, assessment will be, have to be paid in full.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder, and their name and address is not part of the motions on any of these or part of the open public record? They're in the resolution? Okay, just not part of the title. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? I would move for a roll call.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Nelson is I am.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye. Next resolution is 2020 dash one forty-five, resolution approving application of assessment role number five thirty-one A dash fifteen, thirteen, for deferral of assessment against the property for the construction of 2020 Road Improvement District number five thirty-one and five thirty-two. Hardship or deferral. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second. Nelson?
Geisler, second by Nelson, and I skipped one, we'll go back for that. Any comment from council? Any public comment? Anyone present in the Zoom meeting that would like to comment? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye. And 2020 dash one forty-four, resolution approving application of assessment role number five thirty-one A dash six eight? Or did?
I think we took a roll call, but we didn't get a motion in a second on that one.
I think it was Geisler Nelson that, uh, that did that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're down to one forty-six? Resolution one, 2020 dash one forty-six, resolution approving application of assessment role number five thirty-one A dash seven zero for deferral of assessment amount against the property for the construction of 2020 Road Improvement District number five thirty-one and five thirty-two hardship deferral. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Are there any counselors that have a comment on this motion?
None.
No.
Hearing none, are there any members of the public either present in chambers or at the online meeting who wish to comment? With no comments, I'd move for a roll call.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye. Resolution 2020 dash one four seven, resolution approving application of assessment role number five thirty-one A dash eight for deferral of assessment against the property for construction of 2020 Road Improvement District number five thirty-one and five thirty-two hardship deferral. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Peterson. Any questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, is there any member of the public either present in chambers or online that wishes to comment on this motion? With no comments, we'll move to a roll call.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye. Resolution 2020 dash one forty-eight, resolution approving final planned unit development for Ingalls Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that Counselor Peterson that's second?
Yes.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Peterson. Uh, Mr. Mulder, are we gonna have Mr. Johnson explain this? And I will mute mine and turn my volume down.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, tonight before us is a final planned unit development for a twenty-six single-family unit slash lot development on eight point seven acres. Uh, the property is located in an R-three zoning district. Uh, this property is located at the north portion of the existing Ingalls Development. Uh, Ingalls lies between Arrowhead and, excuse me, not Arrowhead, but Anderson Road and Hermantown Road. Uh, the address is forty-seven forty-seven Hermantown Road. As I had mentioned, uh, this is a redevelopment of the northern eight point seven acres. Uh, the existing Ingalls facility will continue to function, uh, as it exists currently today at the south part of the site. Uh, this project came before the planning commission as well as city council last year for preliminary PUD. Uh, at that time, the project, uh, had a number of comments. Uh, at that time, the project was, uh, proposed, or at least approved as far as a preliminary PUD. Project before us this evening is substantially the same as what we had seen previously. Uh, the only change is that the ponding for the project, which originally had been, uh, proposed on the east side of the property, is now located on the south portion of the property. Uh, this actually is a better scenario where it's able to collect all the stormwater from the site into one central location and, uh, keep it on the south part of the site and away from Keene Creek. Uh, this project was heard in October for the Planning and Zoning Commission. At that time, there were approximately ten residents in attendance. Uh, some, uh, comments that were received at the planning and zoning were concerned about the traffic conditions along Anderson Road as well as the ability of the city to permit smaller lot sizes in an R-three zoning as well as the relationship of this project to other single-family homes, and lastly, uh, disin potential environmental issues associated with Keene Creek. Uh, planning and zoning did recommend unanimously to move the project onto the city council. Um, said, this project this evening is twenty-six lots and the eight point seven acres in the north part of the property. Uh, these lot sizes are approximately four thousand square feet in size. Uh, this type of development is generally known as a new urbanism in the fact that it utilizes shared green space throughout the development. Uh, this property would utilize, and this project would utilize, a central north-south public roadway which would provide access onto Anderson Road and have a temporary turnaround at the south part of that. Uh, the properties then would take access off of private alleyways that run east-west on the property. Uh, these private, these private alleyways are approximately twenty-four feet in width. Uh, they'll be maintained by the HOA associated with this development as far as maintenance, snow removal, et cetera. Uh, the public right-of-way which runs north-south, uh, that is going to be on a sixty-foot roadway easement, uh, that will be maintained by the city. But it will be built by the developer and built to city standards. Uh, that sixty-foot roadway easement is a different, uh, dimension than we typically have. City typically has a sixty-six-foot right-of-way easement, but in this case, there's an underlying sixty-foot uh, sanitary sewer easement that exists. It, it makes sense, at least from the staff standpoint, that, uh, the roadway mirrors that easement as it exists today. Now, some other aspects associated with this project. As I had mentioned, these are approximately four thousand square foot lots. Uh, each lot has the ability to front onto some common green space that are upwards of ten to twelve thousand square feet in size. Uh, these green spaces typically run about east-west on the property with a number of these homes fronting on that. Uh, also, the city's Munger Trail Spur is located on the east side of the site which provide access to the greater trail system that the current, the city is currently constructing. Uh, the project proposes they have an internal sidewalk system that homeowners can access by way of this common green to be able to move on to our, uh, trail system that the city has as well as on to a public sidewalk located on that north-south roadway. The applicant and the property owner have proposed a potential HOA and design covenants associated with this project. Uh, what they're envisioning is a unified type of development with similar housing styles, uh, setbacks, et cetera. Uh, they're once again looking at this new urbanism type of design with the idea of front porches, homes fronting onto common green spaces with driveways and garages being at the rear of the property, uh, being accessed by way of alleyways. Uh, as I had mentioned previously, the stormwater is going to be located on the south portion of the site. Uh, this project did receive, uh, the technical evaluation panel as far as the wetlands go from the site. It did receive the approval for wetland impacts. Uh, all the utilities on the site will have public utilities. There will be easements on top of the utilities where they lie within the alleyways. Uh, the applicant is also proposing twelve off-street parking spaces throughout this development. In addition to that, each individual lot will have two parking spaces associated with it, either by way of a garage that's on the property or potentially a parking pad. So there will be two parking spaces per lot as well. As part of the city's process in the ordinance, uh, PUD or planned unit development is allowed within an R-three zoning district. Uh, the city's reg, zoning regulations governing the PUDs require that each PUD receive a preliminary and final approval. As I had mentioned, this had come through the city last, uh, May and did receive its preliminary approval. As part of the PUD, the city is able to, uh, work with different design guidelines associated with the development. Uh, in that case, we can look at, uh, different lot widths as well as setbacks associated with the site as well as density. Uh, to highlight some of these things, in a typical R-three zoning, uh, there's a minimum lot width of one hundred feet. This project is proposing a forty-five-foot width minimum, uh, front yard setbacks. Uh, this property is, is different in the fact that the front yards actually face onto the common green. So it's, it's a little different than we traditionally see. The roadways for this are going to be in the rear yard of the property. So these homes will front onto, uh, the common greenway. They'll be anywhere from a five to ten-foot setback off that common greenway. Each greenway is approximately forty or fifty feet in depth and width. Uh, lastly, uh, the side yard setback, uh, would be a minimum of six feet with an aggregate of fourteen. Under the R-three zoning, we have a ten-feet and a twenty-five-foot aggregate, so it'd be a smaller setback associated with the side yards. Uh, lastly, we're looking at a thirty-foot minimum, uh, rear yard setback for the main structure. At this time, the applicant is looking at detached garages as part of their development. Uh, if indeed, some of these homes do come in at any attached garages, uh, the applicant would work with staff on the establishment and the clarification on these setbacks. Uh, I do believe that the applicant is in the audience this evening as well, if there's any questions at that point. Otherwise, I'd be happy from a city council standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Unmute and turn my volume back up, Mr. Johnson. Uh, are there any questions from counselors at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, quite a few questions, so I'm gonna take my mask off. Um, I did have some questions during the pre-agenda that I asked, and Eric helped me out with that. Um, and, uh, I don't know if you guys can jot these down, because just a few things, again, I'm, I'm all faith for, in favor of this. I like the product being available for, for, uh, people like me that might be looking for a little bit of a downsized. Um, just a couple of concerns that I've heard from some, uh, some other residents and neighbors. So the parking understanding is two per, what if a person has, uh, three cars? Are they supposed to park in one of those other little parking spurs? Um, so that's my, you want the applicant to come up when they're, when I'm done asking the questions?
Um, we would be suspending the rules to do that.
Why doesn't, you, why don't you list the items that you have, and then they can do a presentation?
Sure.
We can allow them comment when there's public comment.
So parking, just about if the person has one or two vehicles. Fences, would you allow fences? Let's say they don't get along with their neighbor all of a sudden, gee, I went for a fence. Uh, what about sheds? Uh, would you allow sheds? Um, lot widths, I've asked Eric, but it sounds like forty. Could you just give a brief description on lot widths? Eric had told me before, and well, part of the presentation was that the, we have the six-foot minimum with the aggregate of fourteen. And Eric had mentioned a forty-five-foot minimum lot width. So in my simple math, that gets us down to about a thirty-one-foot wide home. Maybe to speak to about tiny homes, are you, uh, expecting tiny homes there? Uh, I think, uh, and I guess a question that I would add for Eric is, do, does our current zoning on building, of building a home still apply to, currently, we don't allow tiny homes on a lot now, correct?
That is correct. We have a minimum of a seven hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Yep.
And then we also have a minimum width, I believe it is fourteen feet. As far as the structure.
Yeah, Mr. Rich gave you twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two, so. Do those standards apply to this PUD?
Uh, the PUD allows the, the city to set basically different, uh, requirements as far as setbacks, et cetera.
Has that minimum house size been addressed in, in this PUD?
The applicant that originally, and I'll put it back a little bit, uh, their initial thoughts were minimum lots, minimum house size of fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, and so just to address that tiny home situation. Um, yep, parking fences, sheds, and tiny homes are my questions.
Okay, and we'll move to Counselor Nelson for any questions?
Uh, those are all, those are all.
Questions at once here, and we'll let you address them. All good, Gloria?
Um, those are all my questions, as well as, are they allowing pets?
Pets. Are you allowing pets? Is that it, Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
And Counselor Peterson, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
And I have one question that maybe Mr. Johnson can answer, and then my concern is on the public roadway that's going to run north and south. Uh, although the right-of-way is less than our standard right-of-way, is the roadway width still standard?
That is correct. It will still be standard of a twenty-eight-foot width with curb and gutter on it.
Okay, twenty-eight-foot pavement with curb and gutter?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, and we are done with council questions at this time. And before we move to public questions, I would invite the developer to take advantage of public discussion uh, at the beginning. Uh, so if you would like to address any of those questions at the podium, and this is part of public discussion.
Please, please state your name and address for the record. You can take your mask off when you speak.
Thank you, thank you for that. I am Luke Seidel from SAS Associates, two one nine Westford Street, Duluth, Minnesota. Parking spaces, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. Um, parking spaces have more than two. Um, we're anticipating that, you know, they would use the ancillary with extra parking spaces, would probably work with a HOA to define term limits or time limits on those additional spaces. And we understand there's no parking, overnight parking in the winter for, during snow events and that type of thing, and we're anticipating some of these homeowners to, to not be around all year long as well. Um, fences, yeah, we would have fences or allow fencing, but not the typical fencing that you would see. Eight-foot type fencing, we would allow fencing, but probably in a much smaller requirements. Um, our intent is to have an HOA and an architectural review for all of the sites and all of the construction. So that is gonna answer some of the questions on the fences and the fencing. We obviously don't fences, some people say fences make good neighbors, but if they're ten feet high or eight feet high, that's not necessarily the case in such a small, tight-knit community. Um, sheds would, would be done through our architectural review committee as well. Um, probably not allowed because it's too, they're too small of sites. It wouldn't, we would, if you have sheds and need for storage, there's plenty of places around for off-site storage. Um, lot widths, forty-five is the narrowest one, but they're typically around fifty feet. Um, and that's the goal for our, that's what we shot for, um, the design parameters for each of the, each of the lots. Some of them narrowed down because of the curve in the road. Tiny homes, nope. Um, that's not the intent. The intent is a full, a full foundation, twelve to fifteen hundred square foot home, first floor, and almost all of them would be two floors. We would anticipate that. Um, pets, I don't see any reason why we would limit pets that are out, as long as they meet the city's, city's requirements for, for pets. Um, and the last question was a public road right, roadway, and I think we've already answered that, so. If you want more detail, I can give you that. Um, there's a little bit question about, I heard there was some question about the, the side yard setbacks and the aggregate. And that comes back down to the architectural review, and when we, I did this project, a very similar project in, in Breckenridge, Colorado, and we used the architecture, we slid one building to the west and the other building to the east to create that space where we could, and we shifted some buildings north and south to create different unique spaces within the yard and to allow more air movement and light and all that fun stuff. And that's part of the, the, the evolving process that we have yet to get to. Any other questions?
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done? Okay. Uh, now my mic is open and my volume back up. We, do we have anyone present in the council chambers from the public that wishes to con, comment on this matter? Seeing none, we will move to the online meeting. Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment? If so, please start with your name and address.
I would like to make a comment. My name is Paul Johnson. I'm at thirty-eight eighty-four Orchestra Road.
Go ahead, Paul.
Why does the city have a Hermantown changes ordinances to satisfy developers' needs? I thought the ordinances are in place to protect the residents, wetlands, and in this case, Kings Creek. The size of this project wants to, and this project wants to change its setbacks from a hundred and fifty feet to fifty feet from Kings Creek, so they can add three more houses or more garages. They also want to change the R-three single-family lot size from a half acre to about a thirty. It's just too congested to protect, prevent contamination, Kings Creek, which people still fish in area wetlands. Why is it when you put a PUD on our R-three property, the city can change any ordinances, which is there to protect our city, city wetlands and residents? which is there to protect our city wetlands and residents?
Is that it, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just one point on the planned unit developments. Planned unit developments are a part of the city ordinance and are part of zoning. That's why there are public hearings associated with planned unit developments to give the public a chance to comment, and that was done at the planning and zoning meeting. We are not violating or breaking any of our own regulations. It is part of our regulations to allow planned unit developments. That's a short explanation, Mr. Olbrum. Is there anything else you could add to that? That's our city attorney?
No, I think that was well stated. And we've also looked at all of the provisions of the ordinances. Sorry about the Westminister chimes, but as long... But I've reviewed the resolution, and it was drafted in... Totally in conformance with the provisions of the city's ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present at the online meeting that wishes to comment on this matter? If so, please start with your name and address. Anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment? One last opportunity for public comment to the members of the online meeting. If you have anything to comment, please start with your name and address. With no more public comments, we will move to a roll call.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. We will move to Resolution two thousand twenty-one-four-nine. Resolution approving a special use permit for the grading and filling within a shoreland overlay zoning district. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Peterson.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson explain this one again? And give me a second here to mute and lower my...
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a special use permit to grade, fill, and construct homes within the shoreland or zoning overlay associated with Keene Creek. Atop of Keene Creek, there is a natural environment shoreland area, which covers three hundred feet on both sides of the ordinary high-water level. This project is proposing to work within three-point-seven-two acres of that shoreland area. Approximately fifteen structures would be located within that shoreland area, as well as the associated grading and filling for that. As part of the process, the applicant will be required to work extensively with the city's engineer from a stormwater standpoint, as well as protection of the existing ground surface as well. The special use permit has different conditions or more strict conditions when it comes to land disturbance, in the fact of bare soil can only be left there for a certain time period. And once again, that the water needs to be directed away from the natural feature. In the case of this development, any side yard swales would be running then towards that southerly stormwater basin as part of this project and not towards Keene Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Let me get my volume turned back up here. Do we have any questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Counselor Geisler?
No.
And I have no questions. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the public present in the chambers at this time? Hearing and seeing none, do we have anyone present in the online meeting with questions or comments? If so, please start with your name and address. Second request for public comment from the members of the online meeting. If you wish to comment on this, please start with your name and address. And a third and final opening for public comment from the online meeting. Is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to comment? With no public comment, we will move to a roll call.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And we will move to Resolution two thousand twenty-one-fifty. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement of assessment and waiver of irregularity and appeal between P and R Properties, Twin Ports LLC, and the City of Hermantown. And I'd like to note that Counselor Geisler will be abstaining from this.
Motion to approve, Peterson?
Second, Nelson?
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson, Mr. Mulder. Would you like Eric to...
I'll figure it.
Okay.
So this is a... An agreement with the developer at P and R Properties. Basically, that instead of having to build the sewer pipe all the way to Highway fifty-three, they will end it where their... That will service their building. But then they agree to an assessment if that pipe needs to be extended to Highway fifty-three at a later date.
Thank you. I'll reset mine. Any questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
And I have no questions. Are there any members of the public present in chambers that wish to comment on this matter? Hearing none, are there any members of the online meeting that wish to comment on this matter? With no public comment on this matter, we will go for a roll call.
Counselor Peterson?
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye, and Counselor Geisler abstands. Resolution two thousand twenty-one-five-one. Resolution approving St. Louis County's SAP number zero-six-nine-one-seven-zero-zero-five, CP number zero-zero-one-seven-three-six-nine-five-seven-five, county state aid highway number seventeen. Stebner Air Base Road within the city limits of Hermantown corporate limits. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nelson?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder. And I'm trying to mute.
This is for... The St. Louis County's road project on... They'll be redoing Stebner Road north of Highway fifty-three and Air Base Road. They'll be doing that next summer. This will be done in conjunction with the city's project doing Sunbee and Swan Lake Road. So this is giving municipal consent to their state aid project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
No, this was for comment, public comment.
It's for a public... No. No comment.
Counselor Geisler?
No comments.
No comments, and I have none. Do we have any members of the public in either online meeting or present in chambers that wishes to comment on this matter? With no public comment, we will move to a roll call.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one-five-two. Resolution approving change order number three for sewer improvement district number four-four-eight. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, Nelson?
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson, Mr. Mulder. Hang on here.
So this is just a change order for the sewer improvement district. This change order includes some additional covert work on some of the Keene Creek tributary crossings, a driveway covert on Anderson Road, and then the cleanup of some debris on the Ingalls property.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Geisler?
None.
And I have none. Are there any members of the public present in chambers or on the online meeting that wishes to comment on this matter? With no public comment, we will move to a roll call.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one-five-three. Resolution approving pay request number eight for sewer improvement district number four-four-eight to Utility Systems of America in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-two... Three-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-two dollars and four cents.
Motion to...
Second, Nelson?
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson.
So this is the next pay request for Section twenty-four sewer trunk line to Utility Systems of America. That work just is slowly going forward, but they're continuing to make some progress.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from councilors? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Geisler?
No questions.
And I have none. Is there any member of the public, either present in chambers or at the online meeting, that wishes to comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one-five-four. Resolution approving final compensating change order number four and pay request number six for two thousand twenty road improvement district number five-thirty-one and five-thirty-two to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-one-hundred-fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion to approve, Peterson?
Second, Nelson?
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson, Mr. Mulder.
So this change order is just the... Kind of the changing of the various quantities at the end of the project and paying those out. And then it's the pay request for the project. This is not the last pay request, but we'll have at least one more. But this is kind of closing out this project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Nelson?
None.
Peterson?
No.
Geisler?
No questions.
I have none. Is there any member of the public, both present in chambers and online, that wishes to comment on this matter? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one-five-five. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute addendum to engineering contract for the two thousand twenty road improvement program. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nelson?
Second, Peterson?
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Peterson, Mr. Mulder.
So as part of the project, TKDA had to do some additional work that was not part of the original contract. We reviewed the request, and we agreed on some of those. We did not agree on the same amounts for all of them. But this addendum would finalize their contract and pay them for some additional work.
Thank you. Any questions from councilors? Counselor Nelson?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Geisler?
No questions.
And I have none. Is there anyone present in chambers or at the online meeting that wishes to comment on this matter? With no comments, roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And with that, I would entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Have a great evening.